Well, good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call to order this May 16th, 2023 meeting of the Pierce County Council. The time is 3:01 PM. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Campbell.
Here.
Councilmember Grover.
Here.
Councilmember Denson.
Here.
Councilmember Herrera.
Here.
Councilmember Hitchens.
Here.
Councilmember Morell.
Excused.
Here.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Mello. Councilmember Mello.
Not, the Councilmember Morell is not excused. He is here, and I am here.
Thank you. There's seven members, seven members present, Mr. Chair.
We have all seven members present in a quorum. Thank you, everyone. Item number three is the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Our moment of silence today is dedicated to the men and women in law enforcement, otherwise known as our peace officers, who, who, our moment of silence is dedicated today to our peace officers who we've lost in the line of duty. Yesterday was recognized as Peace Officers Memorial Day. Here in Pierce County, we can, we continue to mourn the loss of our local law enforcement officers, including most recently Pierce County Sheriff's Deputy Dom Calada, who was lost in line of duty on March 16th, 2022. We are so grateful to them and sacrifice. Our peace officers deliver for us each and every day. I'll ask Councilmember Herrera to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of Peace Officer Memorial Day and all who have, all who we have lost in the line of duty. Councilmember Herrera.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. That brings us to item four, approval of our agenda. Is there any objection to our agenda as published? Not seeing any. Our agenda will stand approved. That brings us to Section Five, our consent agenda. Vice Chair Campbell.
Thank you, Chair. I think I see, C2 is here, so I would move that we move item C2 to Section Seven of the agenda and approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, that we move item C2 to Section Seven of our agenda and approve the rest of the consent agenda as presented. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Grover.
Aye.
Councilmember Denson.
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera.
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchens.
Aye.
Councilmember Morell.
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
And Councilmember Mello.
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is seven ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of seven ayes and zero nays, the consent agenda is adopted. That brings us to Section Six, messages from the executive, our judges, our prosecuting attorney. There are a few today. We have a message from the executive transmitting the following ordinances which were approved and signed on May 9th, 2023. They included ordinance number 2023-10, which was an ordinance of the county council amending the county code related to purchasing to include a definition of compost procurement. Secondly, there was ordinance number 2023-11S, which was an ordinance of the county council eliminating the sunset date for the Agriculture Advisory Committee and adopting a permanent Pierce County Agriculture Advisory Commission. Third, there was ordinance number 2023-12S, which was an ordinance of the Pierce County Council which amended the biennial budget of the county. We're now at Section Seven, Proclamations, Awards, and/or Appointments to Boards and Commissions. We're going to come back to proposal R 2023-71. I'm going to ask Councilmember Grover for a motion.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move R 2023-71.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we adopt proposal R 2023-71. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title into the record?
Proposal number R 2023-71, a resolution of the Pierce County Council confirming the reappointment of one existing member, Dean Absher, to the Pierce County Parks and Recreation Citizens Advisory Board.
Thank you. We are joined by Dean Absher, the appointee here, and Dean, we would welcome you to briefly introduce yourself and share any remarks that you might have.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to thank the council for an opportunity to continue serving on this committee and want to do my best to continue to promote the parks, and they're a great asset to the county and the people, and I'd like to do what I continue to do to serve. I've been active in the Fredrickson and with the county in many forums for many years and like to continue to do so for almost 30 years now. So I appreciate your support and want to uphold that support by continuing to do what the best I can to support everything in the county. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being with us. Are there any questions for Mr. Absher before we open this up for a public hearing? Not seeing any. This is a public hearing. Anyone in chambers wishing to provide comment on resolution 2023-71, please come to the podium. Not seeing anybody. Ms. Persons, anyone on, anyone online?
For any member of the public wishing to make public comment, press the raise hand icon in Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. No hands raised.
Thank you. Seeing no one coming forward on this, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council. Any final remarks by councilmembers? Councilmember Grover.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to share my great appreciation for, for Dean to take this position. I have known him for many years, and he, everything he does, he does wholeheartedly, and he's a wealth of knowledge. He can serve on this board, on another board, and I can always count on him to be there and be favorable to the needs of, of the people. And so, thank you, Dean. Mr. Absher, I very much appreciate you being here today and serving on this board. Thank you, Chair.
Good utility player, this.
The what?
Utility player, good.
Yes. Yes.
In baseball season metaphor. Any, any other remarks? Not seeing any. Mr. Absher, thank you for your service, as Councilmember Grover said, not only on this, but so many other important functions of county government. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Denson.
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera.
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchens.
Aye.
Councilmember Morell.
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
Aye.
You only get the vote once, Councilmember Morell.
Yes, for a moment.
All right. I'm, Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
And Councilmember Grover.
Aye.
Councilmember Mello.
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is seven ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of seven ayes and zero nays, the resolution is adopted. Thank you again, Mr. Absher, for your service.
Thank you.
We'll continue in Section Seven. We'll have proposal number R 2023-66 before us. Councilmember Campbell for a motion.
Thank you, Chair. I move proposal number R 2023-66.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we adopt R 2023-66. Madam Clerk, please read the title into the record.
Proposal number R 2023-66, a resolution of the Pierce County Council celebrating the 55th anniversary of the Fair Housing Act in Pierce County, Washington.
Thank you. I'm going to invite Mike Stewart to the podium, and as I read this proclamation, I'll then turn it over to you, Mr. Stewart, for remarks. Thank you for being with us today, and I know you brought some guests and friends along with you. We appreciate you making time to be with us. This is a resolution of the Pierce County Council celebrating the 55th anniversary of the Fair Housing Act in Pierce County, Washington, whereas on April the 11th, 1968, the Federal Fair Housing Act was enacted into law, recognizing that no one should have their right to purchase or rent shelter of their choice hindered because of race, color, religion, sex, handicap, familial status, national origins, sexual orientation, or gender identity, and whereas this year marks the 55th anniversary of this monumental civil rights act of Congress, and whereas Pierce County is committed to the mission and intent of Congress to provide fair and equal housing opportunities for all, and whereas equality of opportunity is a fundamental policy of this nation and our state, and whereas housing choice impacts the quality of our health, the education our children have access to, our employment options, and the cultural and societal benefits we all enjoy, and whereas discriminatory housing practices create racial and economic segregation in our communities and disparate outcomes in overall quality of life, and whereas raising awareness of fair housing laws has made our communities stronger and more vibrant, and whereas we are committed to programs that will help educate the public about the right to equal housing choice in Pierce County, to affirmatively further fair housing, and whereas only through shared cooperation and commitment from government, private and public industry, and all Washingtonians can we remove barriers and foster inclusive communities free from housing discrimination. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Pierce County Council recognizes the 55th anniversary of the Federal Fair Housing Act, and we thank the many people and organizations in our communities who have opened the doors of housing opportunity for all, soon to be adopted this 16th day, May 2023. Mr. Stewart, from the Tacoma Pierce County Association of Realtors, welcome. We'd like to invite you to say a few words.
Thank you. Thank you for having me, folks from the Association of Realtors.
Am I, am I on now? Okay. So, fair housing has been worked on since 1968, but it, it still has a long ways to go. We've had an investigation back east in Long Island within the last five years that found that Hispanics, blacks, and Asians, in many instances, were discriminated against, and this investigation went on for, for quite some time, and it was, it was found, you know, people were found guilty of this discrimination, hundreds of thousands of dollars in fines were imposed on these organizations. Also, within the last two years, there is a real estate company that was fined $4 million for redlining within the last two years. So there is a lot of room to grow in our fair housing. I'd like to thank the council for the willingness to partner with us, and this afternoon's proclamation serves as, as recognition how far we've come as a community and educates us and shines the light on the progress yet to be achieved. As community leaders, we can all be part of transformation of the solution and providing equal service to all. So thank you for having us today.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Anyone else from your group wishing to provide comment at this time? You are welcome to. Come on up, and we're going to go ahead and open up the public hearing on it, so we'll do a few things at once, but very much welcome you to the podium. Please state your name for the record and.
Julie Colson from beautiful Parkland, Washington, and I wasn't expecting to speak today, but as I was driving here, I'm like, oh, my gosh, this is the council meeting. We will all have the opportunity to speak if we choose, and what I wanted to say was that since the video of the unfortunate death of George Floyd, there's been a big change in how businesses and organizations are being run. I wanted to say that I attended a meeting, lens of equity class, or meeting, where I'm learning that some of the bigger organizations are thinking that they need to slow down and maybe lay off people in the diversity and equity and inclusion departments in their company. I was really disappointed to hear that, but I wanted to, I did let them know that there's hope because the realtors are on it, and we are, we're ramping up. We're not slowing down. Since that happened, we've instituted a fair housing challenge to all of our realtors in the whole state of Washington to attend. There's certain implicit bias classes that we have. There's a series of three. We also have an at-home with diversity class, which is a certificate class, and then something called C2EX, which is for all realtors we should take. We also have instituted some scholarships in honor of diversity and equity and to help, and then there's also some down payment assistance program, I believe, that the state is instituting that will give down payment assistance to help some of those folks that have been disparitively, oh, have been not recognized or treated fairly. And so, yeah, when you were reading that, Ryan, I'm like, oh, my gosh, we have so far to go. It sounds good, 55 years, but really, we do still have work to do, and I recommend everybody read the book called The Color of Law, and that gives the history of fair housing and how it's been abused in our country and how we have ended up the way we were. It didn't just happen this way. And so, thank you for this.
Thank you for being with us. This is a public hearing. Anyone else wishing to provide comments on this proclamation, please come to the podium, state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes to make your comments. Not seeing any. Ms. Persons, anyone online?
For any member of the public wishing to make public comment, press the raise hand icon in Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. No hands raised.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council. I'm sorry.
I want to speak out of turn. Any comments that you have?
On, on this proclamation. Would you like to come forward?
No, I don't need to.
Okay. Thank you.
The state, our whole, our state now has a law that all real, real estate brokers must take a six o'clock hour fair housing training class. That's new, and so I meant, that was my list, but I forgot.
Thank you for sharing that.
Thank you for the clap.
So there'll, there'll be a few more public input opportunities after this, just to make sure. Thank you. We have another proclamation. There'll be a public input opportunity. There's a resolution, and then there's citizens forum at the end of our meeting. Final remarks by councilmembers. Councilmember Denson.
Yes, thank you, Sharon. Thank you for bringing this forward. This is really, really important, and Mr. Stewart, thank you for highlighting that, that there are practices like this still going on today. I think it's important for people to know, because a lot of times, people are like, well, that happened in the past, we should just move on. Well, A, there is mitigation that we need to do to, to help the communities that were, that were impacted by this, because the legacy of, of what happened with redlining and some of the other things that you mentioned, you know, are, it has impacts today for these families in terms of wealth creation and, and all of that, but the fact that it's still happening today is very concerning, and we need to make sure that people are aware of that, and I'm so glad to hear of the efforts that the realtors are undertaking themselves to make sure that, that they're not part of the problem, they're part of the solution, and they reach so many people in the community, that's, that's really important. I wanted to reference as well the new state program that's helping marginalize communities and making sure that, that families that, that have been impacted over generations can have some additional support. It, it doesn't completely make good on the wrongs that were done in the past, but it's important that we do what we can to mitigate those impacts and help these families so that, you know, they're themselves and their children and their, and the family in the future, you know, continues to do better and has those same opportunities that, that others have had. So thank you for your advocacy and your passion around this issue. Appreciate it, and we look forward to working with you more in the future to make sure that fair housing is, is truly fair for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. I'll start first. Thank you for your enthusiasm, Ms. Colson, and for sharing some of the progress we've made. A statement that Mr. Stewart made, progress yet to be achieved, and, and I really liked the way that you phrased that, because we know that there's more work that needs to be done, and many in our community and our culture are achievement oriented. We want to get through and solve the problem, get the, get the checkmark, but it's more than a checkmark with the harms that have been done, so I, I think, like, I, I just really think that we can achieve this, but it takes that intentional work, and with the programs that are coming online, I think that we're, we're starting to get there, and we'll just have to be diligent and not get complacent, otherwise we slide back to where we were before. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Vice Chair Campbell.
Thank you, Chair, and I wish I'd pushed my button first, because two of you stole most of my talking points, but thank you very much for the work that you do in putting fair housing front and center. We have so much damage that was done through redlining, and we have the evidence, we have the maps, we have the documents, but we know if we don't stay on top of it, that if we don't continue to have organizations such as yours looking and maintaining high standards for fair housing, that another program under a different name will come back, and systemic issues will come back, and it takes that very intentional watching to make sure that we don't repeat the sins of the past just under a different name. Thank you for all you do. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councilmember Grover.
Thank you, Chair. I too don't have a whole lot more to add, but I just want to say I was a bit taken back to hear that there is a corporation that is still doing this, and I find that very aberrant, but what's fortunate is that we have you folks watching the backs of those who are looking for their opportunity to achieve their dream, and that's very commendable, and thank you for that. Appreciate, too, the enthusiasm. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I too really want to appreciate our association of, our local Association of Realtors. It's really, really active in so much community work, so much civic, so much of our civic life and business development and helping folks build generational wealth. Thank you for suggesting that we pause and celebrate this milestone. You know, one of the, and for all the things that were said by our recipients about the continuing education that professional realtors are doing to build the knowledge base, so they, they have the resources and the skills and the knowledge to protect buyers and sellers, so very important, and you take your profession very, very seriously. We're grateful that you do, and that you are that, that backstop. Something that was shared in the proclamation is also about, about half of our community members rent. They're not often represented by a realtor, by a professional realtor, right? A renter typically is not represented by a realtor. We make note of that in the proclamation, even though they're not represent, even though renters are, are not represented by realtors typically. You know, what I reflect on in preparation for this is, we, we've created a, a lot of laws and continuing education and professionalism around protecting folks. Thank goodness, in the home buying space, discrimination still happens, as has been indicated, but it's often caught and folks are, are able to be represented and supported by professionals i- in the home buying space through a realtor. But again, as, as a renter, we often, renters don't have that same kind of support. It is often too easy to be discriminated against if, if you have kids, landlord doesn't want maybe kids in their rental unit, or it's a gay couple, or a, a, a couple of color. We know that, you know, while we do have discrimination laws in place for renters, it's unlike buying and selling a home, right, where there's, there's so many processes and procedures that really do protect our home buyers against discrimination. It is less so. If, if we all put ourselves in the shoes of many in this room, probably rent today. Chances are 50% of us in this room rent today. I was a renter not too long ago, and I easily see how someone can be discriminated against even in this, in this day and age. So it's incredibly timely, as Mr. Stewart said, even though Congress passed this act does not mean the work is not over, and we don't need to be vigilant about it and continue to be really mindful and educate ourselves and, and educate all of our community members. So thank you again for everything that you do. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on resolution 2023-66?
Councilmember Herrera.
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchens.
Aye.
Councilmember Morell.
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
Councilmember Grover.
Aye.
Councilmember Denson.
Aye.
Councilmember Mello.
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is seven ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of seven ayes and zero nays, the proclamation is adopted. Please join me in a round of applause. Mr. Stewart and friends, all the folks from the Association of Realtors, we'd love to invite you up and give you a personal copy of the proclamation and ask you to take a picture with us, if you can come all the way up here with us. Thank you for being with us.
Thank you for being here.
All good to you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
They look better by, in the camera, they're hoping.
Okay, okay.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you for the photo.
Yes.
Mike.
All right. One, two, three. I'm going to get one more. One, two, three. Got it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, good to see you.
Thank you for inviting me again.
See you again.
See you again.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Campbell for a motion.
Thank you, Chair. I move proposal number R 2023-68.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded that we adopt proposal R 2023-68. Vice Chair Campbell to introduce our guest to read this into the record.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the opportunity to.
Move it first?
I'm, we moved it and seconded it. It was moved by Vice Chair Campbell and seconded by.
All right. I was writing something down. Thank you.
I, I, and I do apologize. Madam Clerk, will you please read into the record? Sorry, Vice Chair Campbell. Madam Clerk, will you please read into the record?
Proposal number R 2023-68, a resolution of the Pierce County Council proclaiming the month of May 2023 as Asian American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in Pierce County, Washington. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Campbell.
Thank you, Chair. My honor to bring this proclamation forward and to also hand off the duties of reading it into the record to our next move in turn in District Five Office, Tuvo. You'll come up and read it from Junior from Sammy. Go ahead.
Whereas in 1978, President Jimmy Carter proclaimed May 1st through May 10th, Asian American Heritage Month, to underline the lack of appreciation contributions in which Asian Americans made to the United States and to recognize the immigration and naturalization laws that discriminated against them, especially in regard to education, housing, and employment. In 1992, Congress passed a law which annually designated May as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. May was picked to commemorate the immigration of the first Japanese, May 7th, 1843, and the completion of the Transcontinental Railroad, May 10th, 1869, and whereas the Tacoma riot forcefully removed and displaced Tacoma's Chinese residents, and a mob of white men burned the Chinese residents' homes and businesses and marched them to the railroad crossing to buy their own ticket to Portland, Oregon, and those who could not afford a ticket had to walk along the Northern Pacific Railway, the railway that their labor helped build, and the Chinese Reconciliation Park established in the early 1990s memorializes this riot. And whereas, from the late 1880s to 1942, Tacoma had a robust Japan town spanning eight blocks in downtown Tacoma with over 800 Japanese immigrants, their American-born children, and more than 180 businesses. However, with the bombing of Pearl Harbor in 1942, Japanese-Americans were forced to Camp Harmony situated at the Western Washington Fairgrounds in Puyallup, which was used as transfer station to internment camps, and following World War II, only 174 Japanese residents returned to Tacoma, and whereas, we acknowledge the prejudice and injustices that Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders have endured, including the Page Act of 1875, the Chinese Exclusion Act of 1882, the incarceration of 120,000 Japanese-Americans during World War II, per Executive Order 9066, 9066, the targeting of South Asian-Americans, especially those who are Muslim, Hindu, or Sikh, after the national tragedy of 9/11 and the Xenos. here in pursuit of economic prosperity as laborers for the Northern Pacific Railway, construction, fur trade, logging camps, salmon canneries, and agriculture. But many of these communities were displaced through Pierce County's history. And whereas, Asian-Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders are devoted community members who serve as leading researchers in science, medicine, and technology, as innovative farmers and ranchers, as distinguished lawyers, judges, civic, and government leaders, as hard-working business owners, as artists, and passionate educators, as healthcare heroes, and as brave soldiers who defend our country. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Pierce County Council that May 2023 is Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and we recognize the history, contribution, and achievements of Asian-Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders, and encourage participants to partake in the community education and celebration events across Pierce County, adopted the 16th day of May 2023.
Excellent job. Thank you so much for being with us and for reading that into the record. I'd like to invite up the Executive Director of the Asia-Pacific Cultural Center, Auntie Lua Pritchard, to the podium to formally receive the proclamation on behalf of the residents of Pierce County. Auntie Lua.
Mr. Chair and respected members of the council, thank you so much for this wonderful honor. What a recognition. Proclamations, we take them very seriously because it's a symbol to us that you care about who we are and you recognize our existence within the area. So thank you, thank you so much to all of you, the council members and Mr. Chair, and the entire county of Pierce. And so, and we can only hope and pray that every day we live up to our standards of who we need to be as a people, to the county itself, and serve all of our county residents. So thank you so much for this wonderful honor on behalf of all of my community members who are here. Can they come up to the to the podium as well and so we can all look at you and stare at you? Yeah. So we have many different Asian countries here and Pacific Islanders. I also want to recognize some of our leaders who are here, who is the Executive Director of our Pacific Island Board, Lika, Lika Smith, can you come up with your people? And then we have a great community leader, Tiva. Tiva, Amna is here as well, so, and then all the rest of our members of our community. We see, like I told you, we don't take proclamations very lightly. We take them very seriously. We all show up as much of us. So when we call out, let's go get our proclamation, they all come out, don't they? So thank you so much today, and we're just so indebted and to all the services and and also the assistance that the county gives us every single year. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lua. We will soon invite all of you up here for a photo. We have a little bit of protocol to get through, and so let's move right into it. Is there anyone, we're gonna open this up for a public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to provide further comment on this proclamation?
Say something?
Come to the podium, state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Yeah. Come here.
What an honor. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. You know, I've always, you know, been been very blessed to be here in this city. It's a great city. I do a lot of work here, but I'm honored to be among my colleagues, Asian Pacific Islanders, and I want to also give recognition to Lua because Lua has been a mentor, a leader, you know, in many, many ways, and the support that she gives, and also her connections with keeping all of the different areas of public services connected with the Asian Pacific Islands. We appreciate all of your help and especially our dear Lua. Thank you, Lua, for all that you do, and thank you for all of you who do a lot for our Pacific Island and Native Hawaiian. And today I want to share something special, too. Because of the the board that Lika heads, I went to court today. I'm a court interpreter, so I went to court in Fife, and I was very pleased when after court, and one of the attorneys came with a piece of paper to one of our defendants and said, here, call this program because you can get all the help, whatever help you need, they will help. And I looked at it, I said, oh, Lika. I was so proud. I wanted to make that public announcement because it's great.
She's a founding board member, though.
So, you know, I've just, it just made my heart. But again, thank you. Thank you, all of you, any Pacific Islanders and Native Hawaiians and Samons. Keep up the good work. Have fun.
For being with us. Is there anyone else wishing to provide commentary in the public hearing here?
We're good.
Hi, it's, I'm Eric Musica, but I was just thinking, it's like, how you give Native Americans benefits, let's give them to the Islanders, African-Americans, and, you know, Indians, all the other people. That's what I was thinking. Get a little tax money, chop it up and stuff, get, make more money from the people, give it back to the government. Now we got more money and we give back to the those people. That's what I was thinking. But that's a great culture. I love these people. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Ms. Persson, is there anyone else online for the public hearing?
For any member of the, oh, I'm so sorry.
Y'all, I'm Sabrina. My name is Sabrina. That means hello, love, and goodbye, and marshallese. As a private citizen, I live in Pierce County. It was, I went to high school, was raised here. In the Marsh Islands, we actually have a treaty with the U.S., and not included in the proclamation, the Hiroshima bomb that was, you know, bombed in Japan was tested in the Marsh Islands, and that's what became of our treaty relationship with other Mariana States and other Guam and other trustees of the U.S. And so I want to thank you and the council for recognizing Pacific Islanders, Native Hawaiians, and Asian Americans as our histories. It's really important to us. As you can see, we show up for our community, and it means a lot for people to recognize this and take it seriously because we take community seriously. We're very faithful people. We're very loving people, and we're always giving and feeding people. So if you need snacks, come by my office during my office hours. And otherwise, thank you, councilmembers of Pierce County, for recognizing and all the work that all these wonderful organizations do, and shout out to Tu, our next move intern. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Mary Chris Castro, and I heard the salmon canneries be referenced in the proclamation, and I just wanted to reemphasize that the labor rights movement was started by Larry Adleong in conjunction with our partnership alongside our Mexican brothers and sisters. And that first strike happened here in Washington State at the Apple Orchards, where they were starting to mobilize. So it's part of our history, it's part of labor rights, and yeah, just wanted to shout out our Filipino brothers and sisters, as the salmon canneries were also referenced there. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else in chambers wishing to provide comment? So grateful to have all of you make time to be with us to celebrate. Ms. Persson, now I think we're ready.
For any member of the public wishing to make public comment, press the raise hand icon in Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. And first, we have Roxy.
Hi, can you hear me? I, I don't know.
We can hear you just fine.
Okay, thanks. I wanted to thank you for taking this call because I wanted to bring up something that's happening out in Parkland. The Parkland community is celebrating the heritage of the Parkland School Building. It's 115 years old, and so we're throwing a big birthday party, and among the guest entertainers, we've invited the Gates Pacific Islanders Club dancers, the Filipino Club dancers, and the Latino Club dancers. And this party is happening on Saturday, May 20th, just right now coming up, and the time is from 12 to noon until 3 o'clock, and the local businesses and individuals have donated food and live music and lots of door prizes and stuff. Everybody's invited to come and find out about the Parkland School. We can't use the school itself for the party, so we're having it at the Keefly Middle School Commons, which is just west of Pacific Lutheran University. So we welcome everybody to come and celebrate our diverse heritage in Parkland. So thanks a lot.
Ms. Giddings, that was a very creative way of staying within council rules and doing a plug for Parkland School while helping to honor Asia-Pacific Islander Month. Anyone else?
No other hands raised.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council or their final remarks by council members. Vice Chair Campbell.
Thank you, Chair. And again, my honor to bring this forward. So many faces I've worked with in so many different capacities over the years here, including my assistant Sabrina, who in high school was a Nextmove internship, and now she's come to be my assistant here and has her own intern, Tu, who had the honor of reading this today. So a big thank you to the Tacoma School District and their Nextmove internship, really helping get youth of Tacoma out and engaged in areas, and honored to elevate their voices today. So please welcome them in into the community. They're tremendous future leaders, and I can't say enough, having represented the east side of Tacoma on city council and county council now for over a dozen years, just the growth I've seen in the participation within the Asian and Pacific Islander communities and so much more celebrations and community gatherings that we have that are so much more influence and policy because you guys do show up and you bring it and you and you bring ideas and you bring people and food and food and more food. And it's wonderful. And so my heart, I've learned so much from so many of you standing here before me and so many who aren't here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Grover.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to comment, as I was listening to the well-read proclamation, that the word that stood out to me was devoted, and that you all are. I have a lot of Asian Pacifics at, island Pacific, how am I, if I've got it right? Pacific Islanders at my church, and they are phenomenal people. And I want to say that I watch you, Ms. Lua, and I watch how much you love and serve your community and how much they look up to you and your leadership, and it shows here, I, you know, what a lesson for the rest of us to have at at being together, trusting each other, helping each other, and it's such a sight to see, and I hope there are a lot of people watching and take a lesson. So thank you for how much you care and you, and yeah, the food. Awesome food. So thank you, and thank you for what you do. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I want to also thank Vice Chair Campbell for bringing this forward and to all of these distinguished guests for being with us. I call Auntie Lua Auntie because I grew up in Hawaii, so my ethnic background is Portuguese, but my familial background is Pacific Islander and Native Hawaiian. Growing up and spending the first 18 years of my life in Hawaii, my mom and dad are still there, my brother is still there, came here to go to school, but I say my familial background is Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander. And in Hawaii, our folks were, who we're close to, who are our elders and who we deeply respect, we call them Auntie and Uncle, and so Auntie Lua will always be Auntie Lua, right? The the heritage of Asian Pacific Islander, Native Hawaiian people are just very, very special. It's what I grew up with. It's what I'm most familiar with, and it's, these are just beautiful, awesome cultures and so many different leaders that are assembled here today to help us commemorate this month. We have the good fortune of always being invited by Auntie Lua to the many, many events at the Asia-Pacific Cultural Center and elsewhere that the APCC helps put on cultural events throughout this beautiful county. And I know many of us say yes to as many of them because they're they're just always amazing celebrations to have with friends and family. So thank you for what you do to bring these cultures to life here and help us celebrate all year long with so many different festivals. Thank you for being with us. Thank you for helping us honor these amazing cultures. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on proposal R 2023-68?
Yes. Councilmember Hitchens.
Aye.
Councilmember Morell.
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
Councilmember Grover.
Aye.
Councilmember Denson.
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera.
Aye.
Councilmember Mello.
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is seven ayes and zero nays. CC the building mass notification from Security Operations Center. S to C, false alarm cleared by court security.
It's one of those months. False alarm?
Yes, we're good.
On a vote of seven ayes and zero nays. The proclamation is adopted. Please join me in a round of applause. You're gonna tell us if it's not a false alarm. Auntie Lua, what we would like to do is if we could invite you and Tu up here and everyone else assembled here, and we have proclamations for most of you, I don't know if all of you.
Okay. So Tiva and Lika?
Because I closed out about contains because I didn't want anybody to like message me. Because I have to keep turning it off. Maybe I'll talk to Kyle, like Jordan. I'm just doing the Zoom part of it. That's just a display, so.
Sabrina, you should come. Let the other people take the picture, yeah. Thank you.
Wait, which one do I look at? What?
One, two, three. I'm gonna get one more. One, two, three. Got it. Thank you so much for picking up here.
Thanks for everything you send us. Oh, my God. Very cool. Thank you so much for all your work.
What's that? Audrey, nice to meet you. Yes.
Yeah, I know what you're busy with.
I'm working.
One, two, one, two, cheese. One, two, three. All right, there you go. Beautiful.
Oh, thank you.
One more, one more, one more, one more. Ms. Lua, one more picture, one more picture.
That's an example.
One, two, three.
You can bring it up, too. Thank you again, everyone, for being here to celebrate. We do not have any ordinances on our agenda today. We do have one resolution. We have proposal R 2023-60. Councilmember Denson for a motion.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I move proposal number R 2023-60.
Been properly moved and seconded to adopt proposal R 2023-60. Madam Clerk, please read the.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I move proposal number R 2023-60.
Been privately moved and seconded to adopt proposal R 2023-60. Madam Clerk, please read the title into the record.
Proposal number R 2023-60, a resolution of the Pierce County Council ratifying the sale of certain county-owned surplus real property located at 2930 Harborview Drive, Gig Harbor, Washington, tax parcel number 02211082062, identified as a saltwater Thailand's parcel. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bokey to brief the council.
Thank you very much, Chair Mello, Paul Bokey, council staff. The Pierce County Council declared parcel number 0221082062 a surplus in ordinance number 201396, which was passed by the council on March 4, 2014. The parcel is .00447 acres of tidelands in Gig Harbor, adjacent to the Tides Tavern. The purchaser is Sand Dollar Holdings LLC, which owns the land that the Tides Tavern is on. Dylan Enterprises, Inc., that does businesses, the Tides Tavern has maintained a transient boat mortgage on this parcel under a license granted to it by Pierce County to accommodate and maintain a dock on the parcel. The license has expired. The agreed-upon price is $20,000. The proceeds will go to the county road fund, because it was dedicated to the county for a ferry landing and is therefore in the Planning and Public Works Department. This was given a due-pass recommendation at the May 1, 2023 Rules and Operations Committee meeting, and Mr. Steve Wambach from our Facilities Department is here to answer any of your questions.
Thank you. Mr. Wambach, do you have anything to add on behalf of the department?
I do not, Mr. Chair.
Do any councilmembers have any questions before we open this up for a public hearing? Councilmember Herrera.
Thank you, Chair. I was just, I don't know if anybody would know, because it's tidal waters, if there's any type of, like, shellfish or anything in there, and if there was any type of study done with that, I don't know, just that question. Sorry.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Steve Wambach, Deputy Director of Facilities Management. To, I do not have a specific answer to Councilmember Herrera's question. Long walk from the back of the room. The, actually, I don't. I don't know if that was something that we studied prior to the property being declared surplus. That would have been the time that was done. The, I saw that the photo was up there earlier. The, it is a tidelands parcel in name, it is only a partially submerged tidelands parcel, and it is in an urban area, so I don't believe any active aquaculture would be possible there. The owner of the adjacent parcel is present, and he might have more on-the-ground information.
And the only reason I ask that question, because I remember years ago where the county sold some type of tidal issues, and there was a gooey duck incident, someone ended up commercially harvesting gooey duck, and there was some issues with it. That's all, that's the only thing I was talking about.
I can say this is not one of those parcels.
Got it, okay. I'm satisfied. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Herrera. I'm sure Mr. Stanley can participate in the public hearing in just a moment and provide any further background here in just a minute. Are there any other questions by councilmembers of staff? Not seeing any. Thank you, Mr. Bokey, thank you, Mr. Wambach. Let's do open this up for a public hearing. This is an appropriate time for anyone, any member of the public, to provide input on this proposal. Please come to the podium, state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes to make your remarks. Mr. Stanley.
Yeah, I'm Peter Stanley, former owner, founder of the Tides Tavern, and owner of Sand Dollar Holdings, which my son owns the Tides now, and I'm his landlord, so it's a very happy situation. In response to Councilmember Herrera's question, I've been looking at that piece of mud for 50 years. I bought the, I bought the Tides property 50 years ago, and there's nothing there. There's no gooey ducks, there's no clamps, there's no, it's just at low tide, it's just mud, so. I didn't have anything to add particularly to the discussion, I just wanted to thank some people. I wanted to thank Councilmember Robin Denson for sponsoring this resolution. I think she's the fourth councilmember, or maybe the fifth, that's been involved in this process, since it started in 2014. Well, you had some help. And I'd like to thank Steve Wambach, Deputy Director of Facilities Management, for his calm and common sense view that only made sense for Pierce County to sell this 1,900 square feet of marooned tidelands. And I'd like to also shout out to Rick Tackett, Real Property Management Specialist, who I've been dealing with since 2014. Haven't met him yet, but certainly talked and emailed a lot. And I want to thank him for his steady presence and support all along this way. And SuJin Kim, the Deputy Prosecuting Attorney, for her relentless pursuit of a correct legal description for this property. We went, we looked at records going back 100 years, and unbelievable stuff. We finally got the correct thing, thanks to her, and thank her for keeping us all on track this last year or two. And to thank you for adopting this resolution, hopefully.
Thank you, Mr. Stanley. Anyone else in chambers wishing to provide comment on this resolution, please come to the podium, state your name for the record.
Eric Musica. That's actually my dream property right there. I call it Peaceful Bowl. It's beautiful right there. How they made this city, and how it's designed right there. Hey, congrats. It's nice to meet a leader like that. What I would recommend is, like, maybe the government just puts in beautiful lans, I'm thinking like sculptures and whatnot, that you can put in this, in the water and whatnot, so now people can look at it and stuff, things like that. It could probably help erosion as well. And, shoot, man, that is one, that's the dream property right there, and, yeah, it's cool to meet another leader. Castar, I enjoy some, that's a great restaurant, recommend it, and, I'm so blessed, and, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in chambers wishing to provide comment? Not seeing any, Miss Persons, anyone online?
For any member of the public wishing to make public comment, press the raise hand icon in Zoom or star night on your telephone keypad. And first, we have Roxy. And it looks like you're muted, Roxy.
Did I figure it out?
Yes, you did.
Okay. Thanks. This is Roxy Giddings. I just wanted to say, I always look at these places and think, can I put my canoe in there? Oh, I hope so. And the other thing is that when you sell these tidelands like that, I mean, this mud is teeming with life, all kinds of life, and for birds, and animals, and insects, and everything else. Anyway, I just hope that it never gets paved or covered over in any way, and I hope they take good care of it, and I'm sure it's worth at least $20,000. So, thank you very much for paying attention.
Thank you.
No other hands raised.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Final remarks by councilmembers. Councilmember Denson.
Yes, thank you, Chair. This has clearly been a very long and involved project. Thank you for the professionalism and expertise of our county staff, and thank you to Mr. Stanley for his perseverance through this process. I am thrilled, and I believe that Mr. Stanley and his family are the perfect owners and stewards of this property. It makes a lot of sense, and they're excellent District Seven constituents and residents and leaders in our community, so I'm thrilled for them, I'm thrilled for this property, and thank you for being here.
Thank you. Vice Chair Campbell.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Denson, the one who gets it done? Is that going to be your new motto? Congratulations on sticking through this long process, Mr. Stanley, we do appreciate it. Just a quick question for Mr. Wambach. When we looked at the drawing there, it was a little offset, because I recall from committee, the lines actually should go down the middle of the gangways there, the piers.
It is our understanding that at this level of Zoom, the boundaries are slightly off from the photo, that portions of the gangway that's on the upper part is partially on the county parcel. Exactly how much of it, I can't stand up here and tell you exactly, is it one foot, is it a half foot? But we believe that there is a shift, so that the blue line that goes from upper right to lower left does touch that.
And with the sale, any liability we have with that overwater structure would be transferred to the new purchaser?
That is a correct statement, councilmember.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other final remarks? Not seeing any, Mr. Stanley, thank you for hanging in there, thank you for the excellent staff work by Mr. Tackett, Mr. Wambach, Ms. Kim, many others who have had a hand in this for quite a while. Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the rule on resolution 2023-60?
Yes. Councilmember Morell.
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
Councilmember Kruever.
Aye.
Councilmember Denson.
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera.
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchens.
Aye.
And Councilmember Mello.
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is seven ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of seven ayes and zero nays, proposal R 2023-60 is declared adopted. That brings us to Section 10, Other Business and Announcements. Are there any by councilmembers? Councilmember Denson, you have an in-district meeting this Thursday. Do you want to share any comments for anyone listening tonight?
Sure, thank you, Chair. Yes, on Thursday, that's the 18th of May, so this Thursday at 6:00 PM, I am having my first in-district meeting at the Long Branch Improvement Club, which is just a hop, skip, and a jump away in Long Branch on the Key Peninsula. It's a beautiful area, everyone is welcome. Really, it's designed to be a fairly comprehensive Key Peninsula community update, so we're going to be talking to the community about what's going on with roads, and stormwater, and broadband, and parks, and human services. We've invited the fire chief, and the school superintendent, and the parks director. So it's, if you live on the Key Peninsula, if you know folks on the Key Peninsula, if you're just interested in learning more about the Key Peninsula, I encourage you to join us. The Long Branch Improvement Club is an historic, gorgeous WPA building, so it's worth it just to come and see this amazing structure, and hopefully we will have a wonderful turnout. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you for hosting us. We look forward to being at the Long Branch Improvement Club this Thursday evening. Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. I have a request of the council, I meant to bring this up. I'm giving the Parkland School event, I'm not doing a plug, but I'm giving them a certificate with our seal on it as a council, and just wanted to make sure that there were no strong objections. We haven't really talked through formats on that, and usually it's all of us are giving certificates, so any concerns or issues with me doing so, it was supposed to be a surprise, but the question was raised, and I thought I'd ask.
If anyone has concerns, please get them to Councilmember Hitchens.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Herrera.
Thank you, Chair. I just, before we get into Citizens Forum, I just wanted to put an explanation point on what we talked about at the beginning here with Police Week, National Police Week from May 14 to May 20. You know, the other day, we had the memorial policing, you know, honor and recognize the sacrifices of our police. I have personally been to too many law enforcement funerals in Pierce County in particular, so it's, I know the sacrifices that they do every day. But I'd also want to take a moment, not just the memorial part of it, but to further, you know, recognize that Police Week can offer a chance to strengthen the relationship between law enforcement and the communities they serve, and to continue to go down that road, in particular here in Pierce County. So I just wanted to put an explanation point on that, so, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Herrera, and I completely agree with you. I'm glad we could do our small part by honoring our moment of silence today in honor of Police Week at Peace Officers Memorial Day, and all the work that we're doing together to improve community and police relations, really, really important work. I don't see other business by members. Ms. Long, do you have any other business for council this evening?
Thank you.
Thank you. So that moves us to Citizens Forum. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to provide comment on any matter that is of interest to Pierce County, that was not on this evening's action agenda. We ask you to come to the podium, state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes to make your remarks. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Chair and the rest of the city council. I had a previous meeting today, so I didn't get to go home and grab a picture, I wanted to humanize him, but I'm here just to use my three minutes.
Could you please introduce yourself?
Yes, my name's LaJona Johnson.
Thank you.
I'm here, my son on April 18 was trying to stop an argument when the young lady that, his roommate and his ex-girlfriend and new girlfriend were arguing, and he went downstairs in the apartment complex to kind of say, not here, not today, let's not do this. And as he turned away to walk away, a masked gunman in the middle of the day at 1:00 PM shot him in his torso six times, and he fell over and passed away. And so I just don't want his life to be reduced to that moment. I also appeal to you, they had the young girl that brought him there in custody and had enough probable cause for an arrest, but then had to let her go because there wasn't not a probable cause enough to convict. And I just, I have spoken to the prosecutor, I know she mentioned they have other cases, and I understand that, I know what a caseload is, I just don't want my son's case to fall, you know, below the radar. He's 20 years old, he has two kids, then never met a stranger, he would just talk to anybody. He could be homeless, he could be rich, he found a way to make you laugh, to make you smile, to be inviting, and I just don't want this to be another statistic or another case. And so I just brought that before you, just to say just that. You know, he's 20, you never imagined bearing a child, they should be bearing you. So that's just what I wanted to use my three minutes to say, so thank you for your time. Lehman Sherrod Tucker, yeah, so, his birthday was yesterday, so.
We didn't invite you to leave that with the clerks, that we have it, we just can't express how deeply sorry we are for your loss. We don't have the words to convey our sympathies.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you for being with us and sharing.
If I, to the councilmembers, on behalf of Ms. Johnson, she's a member of our Assembly Church, pastor church out in Spanaway, Washington. My name is Kim Forrest, and I wanted to come in moral support of her efforts. We've been to, well, she's been to another council meeting that was held, and got a chance to just present and make him known, visible, that it's not just a name or a number, but it is a person. The prosecutor also entertained us to be able to listen to some of our concerns with the way that this was handled, especially the fact that this young lady was arrested, video presentation of her, and we could not understand, even after talking to the prosecutor, why she was released. I'm not sure if any of you are aware, but she was on, interviewed by Cairo and Fox News, because somehow they got the information and wanted to find out some of the details as to why she was released, and the mother's concern as to why she was released. So it's an ongoing investigation, we do understand that, but every opportunity that we get, we're going to try to make it known, visible, the mom's concerned, because the shooter is still at large, and that's concerning to all of us. So thank you for entertaining us at this time, and I hope your level of influence will be able to touch those that are involved, prosecutor, the Sheriff Department, and all of those that are looking into this case. We wanted to make sure that, one of the things that I left with the meeting from the prosecutor was the fact that they almost made it seem like he was a piece of a puzzle. When I say a piece of a puzzle, other names that was mentioned in this case looked like they were trying to build a case around making him, again, a piece of the puzzle. And I didn't want to walk away with that assumption, so I inquired, and my question was answered by the prosecutor, but it still left me with that case, that it's a puzzle that they're putting together, and he's
video presentation of her, and we could not understand, even after talking to the prosecutor, why she was released. Um, I'm not sure if any of you are aware, but she was on, um, interviewed by, um, Cairo and Fox News, because somehow they got the information and wanted to find out some of the details as to why she was released and the mother's concern as to why she was released. Um, so it's an ongoing investigation. We do understand that. But every opportunity that we get, um, are, we're going to try to make it known, visible. Um, the mom's concerned, because the shooter is still at large, um, and that's concerning to, to all of us. So thank you for entertaining us at this time, and I hope your level of influence will be able to touch those that are involved, prosecutor, the Sheriff Department, and all of those, uh, that are looking into this case. We wanted to make sure that, um, one of the things that I left with the, the meeting from the prosecutor was the fact that they almost made it seem like he was a piece of a puzzle. When I say a piece of a puzzle, other names that was mentioned in this case look like they were trying to build a case around making him, again, a piece of the puzzle. And I didn't want to walk away with that assumption, so I inquired. And my question was answered by the prosecutor, but it still left me with that case, that it's a puzzle that they're putting together, and he's a piece. So we wanted to be prioritized, because as I said, the murderer, the person that actually pulled the trigger, that actually was an accomplice to the individual coming there, is still at large. Thank you.
Thank you for being with us. Thank you for being with the family. Um, ma'am, you, you would, we, you've already had your three minutes, but, um, I, let me just say, many of us, um, would love to meet with you after the meeting, make sure we get some, uh, personal time with you. You, you have to come to the podium, ma'am, because of the.
The only thing I want to say is not just for my family. I want it for the community, because he's out there and happy. He was bold enough to do it in the daytime, so citizens are at risk. Um, that's it.
Thank you. And again, I'm sure many of us want to, would love to meet with you afterwards to learn more. Thank you for being with us. Anyone else in chambers wishing to participate in Citizens Forum? Please come to the podium, state your name for the record.
Oh, I just heard, um, it's Eric Musica. Um, you got to put, and when, if a girl gets hot and she's out, you put, uh, one of those E.T.M. monitors on her and give her to a protector or whatnot, and now they're linked together. So at least now you got communication between those two people. That's what I'm thinking. I'm so sorry for that. That, that hurt. I can't imagine that. Um, much appreciation. I have one of those E.T.M. monitors on me, myself, and you got to figure, you know, you link those people up, and at least you got the, you know, the GPS and, you know, we'll, we'll cap the, we'll make the, uh, the monitor better and stuff. But, um, much appreciation. Uh, I'm so sorry for what happened, but, uh, oh, I'm sure we can make it better. Thank.
Thank you. Anyone else in chambers, please come forward, state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes to make your remarks.
My name is Alicia Jameson, and I thank you all for being here and taking the time to listen to the citizen. I'll just kind of piggyback for a second. Um, we've been to the prosecutor, we've sent emails, we've sent, um, letters, we've called. I really feel like this is just being brushed under the rug in the case of my nephew Lehman Sherrod Tucker. I just feel like it's not being taken as seriously. We've asked for his cellphone to be opened so that we can find more information. We have asked for the prosecutor to be more, a little more forthcoming. It's kind of like the prosecutor passed it off on the detective, detective passed it back on the prosecutor to say the information that has been provided. Um, the different information they've been given is not being followed through on. So I just really want to admonish you all to, any, any influence that you have to, on the prosecutor, to please just speak to her and the detective and let them know this young man was a wrestling champ at Spanaway Lake. I mean, he was a really, really great kid, and his life has just been, is over because of a young girl who, or someone who didn't value life. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for being with us. Anyone else in chambers? Please come forward and state your name for the record.
Randomly difficult to follow this. My name's Scott Lay. Many of you may recognize me. I've been involved in the effort to stop the airport issue, uh, that has just recently been resolved. If I can take a moment. My condolences. I do not know you folks, but this is horrifically tragic. Shifting back, um, I just felt like I wanted to come in here personally and say thank you. You know, the governor signed the legislation yesterday. It has effectively changed the direction of where we thought things were headed, and I think in large part because this body took the time early to say, no, this doesn't work for us and our communities out there in the area. And so I had more to say, but I'm going to just leave it with a thank you. We, I, just personally, I really appreciate everything and the real effort on part of this council to say, no, not here. Thank you.
Thank you for being with us. Anyone else in chambers? Not seeing any, Miss Persons, anyone online to participate in Citizens Forum?
Any member of the public wishing to participate in Citizens Forum can press the raise hand icon in Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. And first, we have Terry.
Mr. Chairman, County Council, I'm Terry Heard from the Ferguson area. I'd like to address today the intersection lights on Canyon Road and Military Road, specifically turning left off the road. At that intersection, it becomes an extremely long-time light waiting for the other lanes to trip the light, specifically off of Military. Because of that intersection having lights at a distance from itself, both north and south on Canyon Road, there's a long interval of no traffic at all on that key, and I have waited many minutes for nothing. Can that light be changed to a yellow flashing light? It would help move traffic both for the people going into the business community and down to cross paths. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Heard. Anyone else, Miss Persons?
No other hands raised.
Thank you. Um, seeing no other hands, we'll close the Citizens Forum portion of our meeting. Um, again, thank you for all of the, the different comments we heard today. Again, at the conclusion of the meeting, I know many members would like to visit with you and, and learn more, and our deepest sympathies for your family's loss. Councilmember Grover.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to take a moment to thank you, Scott. You had a great team going, and it was a big effort. And I just think everybody gets to have, um, some recognition for what happened. Pastor Forrest, I apologize I didn't recognize you and how blessed you are to have him. There are no words. So, I will see you. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Um, a lot of good work was done in the legislative session, including making our voices really clear about, uh, a big commercial airport not being appropriated in our rural area. Um, thank you for making note of that. Um, and also today, we know the state legislature heeded the call of local government and many folks to have a statewide, uniform, um, way of dealing with controlled substances and highly encouraging drug treatment, um, as a path forward. And, uh, the legislature concluded their work in a short amount of time today, and we're grateful that they listened to our suggestions and requests in that regard as well. So seeing no other, um, business before the Pierce County Council, we are adjourned.